The zoning board of appeals. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chester. Mr. Cho. Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Rouge.
Here.
Ms. Houston. Warren Brown.
Here.
Vouch.
Here, we have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none. If I can remind board members, if you would just go ahead and turn your mics on now and pull them close to you so we can hear you well, we'd appreciate it. And you can leave them on or turn them off.
This time, we turn to the approval of the minutes. First, deal with the minutes of the December 13th, 2023 special meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Everyone had caught.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Charles.
Okay. On page five, at the very top, the first sentence that says, "Ms. Trimble ask why they are all here at this meeting?" And I think the "are" should be "aren't." And then, if I can find this, page 11. About halfway down, there's a sentence that says, "Mr. Warren Brown ask if the reduced site plan, when it goes from 300 units to 270 units, would be reviewed by the water company for drainage?" If I said that, I meant the city and the answer responds to that particular question. So I think maybe put the city verbaner, whatever, in there instead of the water company. That's about all I have there.
Mr. Warren Brown, I think on the first item that you mentioned on page five, I think that was a language choice. It was like, why are we all here? Because a decision was made at the October meeting, so why is it being brought up again? So I think it was a vernacular usage.
Oh, see, I thought it was in reference to the petition when Harvey, just previously to that, stated that the letters were from people in the Urbana community and from outside the community, not necessarily living in Behringer Common subdivision. So.
Okay.
That, and I guess, I mean, that could have been a big break in the conversation. I don't know. So.
Okay, I'm happy to defer to you.
Go back and see if that's in reference to the, because there were no people here from, that were on the petition. There was nobody that supported the proposal.
I understand.
Okay.
Point taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other changes noted to the minutes of the December 13th, 2023 meeting? Hearing none, then this time, seek to approve the minutes of the December 13th, 2023 meeting. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 You want to oppose?
Do we need a motion for these? We've talked about this over the years.
Okay. All right, then, we need a motion. Is there a motion in regards to the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the December 13th, 2023 special meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
It's been moved. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Now, I've been seconded, all in favor of that motion to approve, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Those minutes are approved. This time, we will take up the minutes of the December 2023 regular meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of the December 2023 regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Been moved. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Now, I've been seconded, all in favor of the approval of the minutes, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose by the same. Those minutes are approved. Are there any written communications?
There are none.
Any continued public hearing?
There are none.
At this time, then, we return to new public hearings. This time, I swear in any audience members who wish to speak, please stand up, raise your hand. You swear the testimony you're about to give will be truthful to the best of your knowledge. Thank you. When you come to the table, please sign in and state your name and address. The public hearing procedure will be as follows. The chair or the acting chair opens the public hearing. Staff presents a summary of the case. Zoning board members ask questions of staff. The applicant makes a statement and presents evidence. Zoning board members ask questions of the applicant. Proponents make statements. Board questions those proponents. Opponents then make statements. Board questions the opponents. Rebuttal is allowed by the applicant. Rebuttal by the objector. Applicant makes a final statement. The zoning board then discusses the case, and the zoning board makes a motion and votes on the case. We will follow that procedure. At this time, then, call for hearing ZBA 2023 major dash oh five. A request by Andrew Fell on behalf of Yasmin Bobat, trustee for a major variance to reduce the required front yard along McCullough Street from 20 feet, 4 inches to 5 feet at 408 West Main Street in the R4 medium-density multiple-family residential zoning district. May we have a staff report, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, board. Andrew Fell does request a major variance on behalf of Yasmin Bobat to reduce the required front yard along McCullough Street from 20 feet, 4 inches to 5 feet at 408 West Main Street. The board may recommend approval to city council by a two-thirds majority vote or approval with conditions, or deny the request. The board should either accept the specific staff findings, as explained in the staff report, or articulate their own specific findings based on the application's criteria. Staff recommend the ZBA forward a recommendation to city council to approve the major variance with one condition. The original two-story house at this property was built prior to 1909. The applicant purchased the vacant property in 2018. The building was in poor condition with several building code violations and was demolished in 2021. The applicant also owns and renovated the duplex property to the east and will provide parking spaces at this adjacent site for the proposed duplex. The vacant property is located at the northeast corner of West Main and McCullough Streets. The house, the property is zoned R4, and the area is a mix of single and multifamily residential. The future comprehensive plan use of the entire area is residential. This is an aerial of the previous building. It itself was legally non-conforming due to inadequate yards on the north, east, and south sides. On a corner lot in this district, you'd be required to have a minimum of a 15-foot front yard on both Main Street and McCullough. It was legally conforming here on the McCullough side, but not on the Main Street side and not on the east or north sides. This would have been a 10-foot rear yard and a 5-foot side yard. The applicant would like to build a legally permitted two-story duplex with a smaller footprint than the previous house in the same general location as the previous house, towards the southwest corner of the lot as much as possible. It would be 5 feet further back from Main Street than the previous house and 5 feet closer to McCullough Street. The west property line, as you can see, along McCullough Street is 10 feet east of the east edge of the sidewalk, which creates a smaller buildable area than most similarly-platted houses. So not only do we have the 15-foot setbacks on both sides, well, there's a 15-foot setback on Main Street, the front yard on McCullough, which has calculated that the average of all of the existing houses comes in at 20 feet, 4 inches, on top of the fact that the property line is actually 10 feet east of the sidewalk, because that's how it was platted back in, I think, 1872. And so, moving on. This is a review of the setbacks of the existing houses on McCullough Street. They range from 16 feet, 5 inches, 18 feet, 18 feet, 26 feet, 26 feet. That averages out to 20 feet, 4 inches, which is what this house would be required to have off of McCullough. This is a potential, you know, design elevations, rendering of the floor plan that was submitted. Again, ZBA would not be regulating design or colors or construction, simply the footprint as submitted on the floor plan. But this is one way that it would present itself as constructed. This is looking north from Main Street and looking northeast from the corner, and then working your way around to McCullough. The lot and proposed duplex would meet all other development regulations for the R4 district. Section 11.3 of the Urbana zoning ordinance requires the zoning board of appeals to make findings based on variance criteria and then articulate those findings. Staff reviewed the proposal against the five variance criteria and determined that it met all five criteria. These findings are detailed and summarized in the staff report. Staff published a legal ad, sent letters to 26 neighboring property owners, and posted a public hearing sign on the property. Staff received one letter of support. The findings that are summarized in the staff report are that the variance will not serve as a special privilege because it is necessary due to the small size of the corner lot, whose building area is further reduced by an overly wide right-of-way. Second, it would remedy a situation created by the zoning ordinance's requirement since 1950 of minimum front yards equal to those of its neighboring lots on both front sides of a corner lot. Third, that the duplex would be consistent with the essential character of the neighborhood as it would be of similar intensity, size, and style, and would be stepped back from the corner of the block with the proposed open porch at the extreme-most corner of the lot, then going back to the enclosed vestibule. Fourth, building a duplex would not create a nuisance at this time or in the future and might prevent a future nuisance on an otherwise undeveloped lot on a street corner. Finally, the variance is the minimum deviation from requirements of the zoning ordinance to accommodate the request. ZBA has the following options in case ZBA 2023 major oh five. Forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve the variance as requested based on the findings in this memo, or forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the variance request. If the ZBA elects to recommend conditions or recommend approval of the variances on findings other than those articulated herein, they should articulate those findings accordingly. Staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals recommend approval of the proposed major variance in case ZBA 2023 major oh five with one condition, that construction must be in general conformance with the attached site plan entitled 408 West Main New Duplex. That's the one that I showed you. That's the end of the staff report. Mr. Fell is also here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question about the parking. I have a question about the parking. The person owns both lots. And does?
Yes.
And does something happen when somebody with zoning, when someone owns two lots?
So, this property is next to 406 West Main Street. 406 West Main Street had, was a legally non-conforming triplex. It did not have any parking on that lot at all, and residents parked on the street. When they renovated 406, they took down a garage which had a dwelling unit in and put in parking with the understanding that that parking would be made available to whatever building got built on 408, because 406 didn't require off-street parking.
406 did not require it?
It did not have it at the time, and because the duplex did not stop being used, it continued being a legally non-conforming duplex with no parking. So when they added parking to it, it was with the understanding that that, they were going to continue utilizing the allowance of it not having parking. It was continuing its non-conforming use, and they were going to use the space on that lot to provide parking for 408, which they knew would not have room for parking for a duplex.
So, what does that mean in terms of zoning? You know, he owns both properties.
Right.
And they are separate parcels.
Yes.
And what if he decides to sell one of them, the one that has the parking on it?
So the zoning ordinance allows somebody to provide off-site parking within 600 feet of their property. They have to show documentation to that effect. In this case, if Ms. Bobat, you know, sold the lot, it would have to be with an agreement that that person would either continue using the parking from 406, or they would have to find other means for that, either at a public parking facility or at another site that had verified surplus parking.
Okay.
It was an interesting agreement and seemed to work out well.
Are there any additional questions for staff? Thank you. The applicant wished to be heard.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was on. Andrew Fell. Don't need the address, I don't think. So, as usual, I think Marcus did a great job of kind of explaining the situation and what we're requesting. If we hadn't talked about the parking, that is one of the things I was going to bring up, because this is, both of these lots are kind of tied together, and they have been in our quest to develop them, I will say. So when we were first contacted to do the work at 406, not the lot we're talking about, through that process, we knew we were going to eventually want to develop 408, and both of these lots are, as existing, non-conforming, neither one had parking. So that's kind of how we worked with the planning department to come to an arrangement to keep 406 non-conforming with no parking, put some parking spaces on it that we could use at 408 when that lot got developed. At that time, we had, didn't really have a notion of what we wanted to build at 408, so we hadn't, I hadn't researched the lot. I didn't, didn't look at the parameters. And so at that time, the whole intent of getting these parking spaces was to try to do 408 just by right without having to get any variances, which is why we did the parking. And at that time, I had no notion that the property line was actually 10 feet west of the sidewalk. So that is the, that's one of the factors here that is creating the hardship for the lot, is having that, the 10 feet of yard that we visually have, sort of, but don't have legally. If, for instance, the property line was where it normally is, next to the sidewalk, I think we make it because our, the average setback, the 25 feet is the maximum, and we're just over that from the sidewalk. So without that 10 feet that is visually there, we're almost legal in this lot. So we kind of have a perfect storm of conditions that don't let this be developed very well. And one of the other things about the parking situation that leads to requesting this variance is, yes, we have the parking at 406, and without requesting the setback on the west side, we need to push the building north, which means we can't get the driveway on the north side of the lot. So the people that live at 408 that have to park at 406 would then have to walk all the way around the block, right, down to Main Street, around and up McCullough to get into their house. So this is, that's another reason to request this variance, which, by pushing the west setback out a little bit, lets us bring the north side of the building down in order to get the driveway in, so the residents can access their parking spaces. So hopefully that, I mean, there's a lot of information there, so hopefully that was clear enough, and if questions, I'm happy to answer anything.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I'm just curious, who owns that 10-foot strip?
It's part of the right-of-way of McCullough. So I, and I don't know offhand. I assume that McCullough is just very narrow there, and perhaps the street's pushed all the way to the west side. I don't know.
It's part of the city's right-of-way network.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I did not notice anyone else standing to be sworn to testify. So are there any proponents in favor of the application that did not get sworn in? Are there any opponents? Hearing none. I take it you don't have any final statements since there's nothing else that came up? All right, then, we're ready for the board to discuss the case. Any discussion among the board? Hearing none, then are we ready to make any motions in regard to this case?
Case of ZBA 2023 major oh five. I move to approve the variance, send it to city council with one condition, construction must be in general conformance with the attached site plan entitled 408 West Main New Duplex. I'm in favor of this motion because of all five points listed in the staff summary of findings.
Been so moved. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? And we're ready to call this motion for vote?
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Rouge?
Yes.
Sutman?
Yes.
Warren Brown?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
That motion carries by the necessary vote to forward it on to the city council at their meeting of, do we know when?
I believe it is February 19th for committee of the whole. And then it would go to council on February 26.
Thank you. This time, we call for hearing ZBA 2023 minimum dash oh four. A request by Tanner Shiley on behalf of Aaron Honhorse, doing business as ECI Holdings LLC for a minor variance to reduce the required rear yard from 10 feet to 7 feet, 6 inches at 805 and 809 Perkins Road in the B3 general business zoning district. And we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Mr. Shiley requests a minor variance on behalf of Mr. Honhorse to reduce the required rear yard from 10 feet to 7 feet, 6 inches at 805 and 809 Perkins Road in the B3 zoning district to allow an existing open-frame accessory structure to remain in its current location. The board may approve the request, approve the request with conditions, or deny the request. The board should either accept the specific staff findings or articulate their own specific findings based on that application's criteria. Staff recommend that the ZBA approve the minor variance as presented. The existing principal structure, which you can see to the right of the accessory structure, was built in 1983 or 1984. It replaced an earlier structure that was built sometime between 1940 and 1973 and had the same building footprint since 1989. In November of '23, the applicant built a 430-square-foot detached accessory storage structure next to the principal structure without realizing that it required a building permit. He built it further from the rear property line than the principal structure, presuming that that would mean that it would meet any required setbacks. He did not realize that the principal structure itself encroached into the rear yard by approximately 5 feet. Planning staff informed him that it was located within the required rear yard, and he would need to obtain a minor variance to allow the structure to remain in its current location. The property is located east of Cunningham Avenue on the south side of Perkins Road, just inside the corporation limits here. The property is zoned B3 with B3 on three sides of it and Conti R3 to the east. The requested minor variance would bring the structure into legal conformity with the zoning ordinance. It is an post-and-frame structure with metal siding on the south side only and a metal roof, and is open on the east and north sides to provide access for loading and unloading in the parking lot. Section 11.3 of the Urbana zoning ordinance requires the ZBA to make findings based on variance criteria and then articulate those findings. We've got some photos here. This is a little closer shot of the north side of the storage structure. You can see here that there, oh, my arrow doesn't work on here. Okay, so you can see on the principal building on the right-hand side that there is a staff entrance and a bay door. So materials move in and out of the parking lot into the building, and the location of this storage structure is very convenient to keeping extra materials outside. This is a stepped-back picture of it, showing how it looks from the street. It's the far rear of a fairly large parking lot, and you can also see the west side of an additional storage area outside. And finally, this is a view of the property from the south, from the north gate. And finally, this is a view of the property from the south, from the North Gate Shopping Center. It's the rear of the shopping center. This, you can see the back of the principal building as well as the back of the accessory storage structure. And then finally, a couple of shots close up. The shot on the left is looking directly west down the rear line of the accessory structure, and at the end of the white blob, you can see a black strip that is the principal building extending another foot and a half back from where this storage structure ends. And the picture on the right shows that the structure itself, the accessory storage structure, is detached. It's not, you know, connected to the principal structure. Section 11.3 of the zoning ordinance requires the ZBA to make findings based on specific variance criteria and then articulate those findings. Staff reviewed the proposal against the five variance criteria and determined that it met all five criteria. These are detailed in the staff report. Staff published a legal ad, sent letters to 12 neighboring property owners, and posted a public hearing sign on the property and received no public input. The findings that are summarized in the staff report are, first, that the requested variance will not serve as a special privilege because it will provide good access to the parking area and building, and the principal structure itself is legally nonconforming. Second, the requested variance would remedy a situation created by the applicant unknowingly building the accessory structure in the required rear yard. Third, the accessory structure would be consistent with the essential character of the neighborhood, which includes large commercial buildings with outdoor storage areas. Fourth, the accessory structure will not create a nuisance as its sole purpose is to protect construction materials from the elements, as has been occurring in this location for decades. Finally, the variance is the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to bring the accessory structure into legal conformance. The ZBA has the following options in case ZBA 2023 minor 04. Approve the variance as requested based on the findings outlined in this memo, or approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the variance request. Staff recommends that the ZBA recommend approval of the proposed minor variance in this case as presented. That's the end of the staff report. Mr. Honhorse and Mr. Shiley are both here to answer questions, as am I.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? You are the applicant's, correct? You wish to be heard? Okay, well, there's no requirement that you, but I would extend that opportunity to you if you wish to be heard. I see no... You wish to be heard? As a proponent or an opponent? A proponent?
Again, I'm Andrew Fell, and I just want to say sort of anecdotally for the applicants, I live past there, I drive by there at least twice a day, usually four times a day, and over the, I would say, over the last year or so, especially since, I mean, I saw this thing getting built, didn't think anything of it, you know, didn't realize it would be, there was any zoning issue. But what they have done with that building is now cleaned up the entire space. So all the stuff that was kind of, you know, not haphazard, they always kept it nice, but the things that were in the yard kind of all over are now neatly put back there. It looks so much better. So go for it. Okay, thank you.
Any questions for?
Is there a question?
I take it we have no opponents to this proposal? Then I believe we are to the point where the zoning board discussed this case, is there any discussion need to be had by the board? Then at this time, any motions to be made in regards to this particular case?
I'll move the approval of a minor variance, ZBA 2023 minimum dash 04, as presented based on the summary of findings 1 through 5 in the staff report.
Then moved, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for vote on this motion.
Mr. Rouge?
Yes.
Butman?
Yes.
Warren Brun?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Variance is approved. Is there any old business?
There is none.
Any new business?
There is none.
Audience participation? Your staff report?
There is none.
Study session?
No. I don't think so.
If there is none...
I heard you say lots, so I don't know that we're planning on a study session for lots in particular, but if we're speaking of procedures in the future, we do plan a study session to kind of, to look at procedures in general and refresh. That hasn't been determined yet. And likewise, we also are required to look at the bylaws every two years, so that would be included with that, so that will be in the near future.
If there is nothing further, then we are adjourned.
Adjourned at 7:41. Thank you.